Mayor Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Brandon Hopland.
Here.
Deanna Henning.
Here.
Chris Casper.
Here.
Susan Walte.
Here.
And Kip Morris.
And, um, you don't want to call the police agents tonight? Okay. Comments from citizens present? Anyone who wanted to say something?
There's no one second.
All right. Seeing none. Actions if any based on the work session. Okay, so I was just mentioning to, um, the mayor that we're not quite done with this discussion. There's two purposes that we happen to be discussing tonight. One is on the, there's two parts to the police building that we're looking to get correction on. If you are comfortable with the construction manager form of construction, then what we're asking is allows to be able to prepare the request for qualifications, documents for both architects and contractors for that. We'll also be bringing that back to you for your approval as we go forward. Under the sewer, oh, the other thing that we're going to be looking at and asking you about is how do you want to proceed with the financing of the, uh, of the police building? We'll talk about that in a minute. Under the sewer, what we're going to be asking of you is the permission to proceed with, go ahead to do a change order, a budgetary change, not budgetary, not change order, a budgetary amendment, and to, um, proceed with a change order in the contract that we have with Hanny, to do two additional portions, and then the installation of the line. Okay? All of that will come back with you, but what we need is your authorization to proceed forward and putting it all together so that we can bring it back to you. So, as it pertains to the police building, so where we left off was talking about the construction manager for the building versus design bid. Okay? Are there any other questions on that? Yes.
Um, just one. Should we have an owner's representative? Is that salary or is he included in this 10 million?
Was that included? Debbie, was that included? I think it was. I don't believe that was included in the estimated cost.
I thought we were looking for it.
Yeah. So, the, um, estimated construction amount on the updated one was just a little over 10 million, but that did not include a owner's representative, or, um, I think that cost was, um, based upon the traditional design bid build. So, it may be a little bit more on the front end, you know, to include the owner's representative. I think the percentages for the general contractor and the architect remain the same, it just doesn't include owner representative costs. First set of meetings that you would have with that architect and contractor would be establishing a budget if you go into this direction.
What percentage are we paying? Are the architects working on a percentage? Contractors on a percentage?
The only you're looking at is about 10%. I think the chief has that information there. I'm gonna let the chief answer if they give the wrong information.
Can you take it?
I'll put it up there.
So, what are your projections?
What is your projection manager for this type of building? Yes. It's complicated enough. I'm always aligned to the idea of having a set budget for each year that you're going to go with with this kind of building. My experience in, in the past, these were recreation building when we built. And we established a budget, went through several reviews of the architectural plans and then under that budget, we were able to almost instantly pay the ask for and still keep that budget. Then they came in on a budget and split that cost with the contractor. For this complicated of a project, I'm very much.
That's a good question. So, the $10 million is that for the contract and building?
That would be for, that would be for architectural costs. Uh, that would be for the construction, and that would be for all other soft costs, such as permitting fees and so forth. So, the idea is that's your total, your total cost.
I was just trying to sort out the answer to that question about if the owner's representative excluded the budget and...
The estimate that we received from McKenzie, the architect, did not include the owner's representative because we had not discussed that with...
That would be an internal cost, though.
It would be...
I mean, owners represent, I mean, it really needs to be owned by the city and its own, you know, category outside of...
Yeah, I just don't want to include that from an accounting standpoint.
Sure.
Include that in the total cost, but you're right, it would be an employee that's hired by us to be our on-site manager. Yeah.
So, approximately 10%.
So, we're gonna pay a million bucks to have an architect like that?
So, that's the design and the construction, drawing up of plans and all that.
Have we put that out to bid competitively? That just seems...
Oh, yeah. So, all of this, yeah, would be competitive building, but would, if we go ahead with the process that we're suggesting, we'd first draft up requests for qualifications, because you don't want just a million on this.
We would figure out that.
Right. So, they would provide bids for us, and we would, those would be evaluated based upon their experience suitability, you know, obviously, cost considerations too.
Six months ago or so, when we first did that, I kinda went through the internet and I apparently, there's people that specialize in building municipal buildings.
Yes.
But I thought they were more like 6% for the architect. This is my memory.
Well, the project cost summary that we have here, consulting costs for the project...
Yes, they're actually at 9%. Then you have the geotechnical services and special inspections. So, you have some of the land, things that...
The land should have issues too.
And the geotechnical, you know, inbound sites, they have listed at 30,000.
The reason I...
Special inspections, 30,000, the geotechnical services is at 15,000, so it comes up close to a million. So, it's a 10%. That's a lot of things besides...
I understand you're worried looking into, I don't have any else, but, I mean, you know, home architecture is relatively cheap. I mean, it's five or six percent.
Yeah.
And you're still just putting ink on paper, and how it's worth of the million bucks.
Well, we're not building a home, we're building...
I really said, right? So, this is, yeah, still just ink on paper.
And this might be the same, same thing. So, we're, we're using McKenzie for this construction manager type.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? So, we have paid them the money to make that?
McKenzie has done a space needs analysis for us, based upon the space needs. This is a rough draft of what that would...
Right.
What that could look like. There's nothing set in stone. So, is the design.
So, this 10 point, whatever million is what we, the city, has decided it would cost to make this, or McKenzie has said, if you want this, this is how much it will cost?
McKenzie.
So, have we looked at somebody else in that this is what we want, or are we now saying, we are only going to use McKenzie, and this is what's gonna happen then? Because I'm not clear there.
Yeah. So, we're not saying we're just using McKenzie, okay? So, if we go with, forward with this project, the next step would be the request for qualifications for your architecture. That would be the design part, your general contractor, and our owner's representative.
So, there's three parts.
And you base that on, you have, you know, different criteria?
That's the RFQs, correct? So, we're gonna say, we have some money to make a police station. People are gonna come to us and say, we can do it for 9.5, and then we're gonna check their RFQs.
Yes.
So, just because McKenzie made that, that does not mean it's all, we're going that way.
Right. And when they give you that information, they give you examples of the work, who's on the team?
Right. What they've done to the guys.
So, the purpose of this exercise is just to try to figure out about how much we're looking at as far as investment for the building.
Right. If we chose someone not McKenzie, how much did we lose with that? How much did we pay for that right there?
I don't know, because this original study was done in 2012.
This is from 2012.
Well, so, we've spent a little bit of, we've spent about $50,000 updating this space assessment needs to include some geotechnical work for now.
Because I remember, like, we have, I know sometimes we get plans made, and then they don't get made, and now we have this plan, and now we can't use it because so much time has passed. That is not the case with this, because we have paid to update that, this idea.
So, we paid to update, um, the construction, with the construction cost estimate?
Based upon McKenzie's statement?
Yes, based upon McKenzie's assessment of the other space needs.
Mostly based on this, okay? So, part of what they did was not just simply, in this update, update that design, that blueprint design. We also hired geotechnical engineers to go look at soils and do those kind of studies.
Okay. Great.
Is there, when you were further down the road and receiving proposals, is there money in the budget to pay for some of their work? I know that that's a practice use, I understand.
Pay for some of whose?
To pay for the proposals, not pay for fully, but to provide some funding towards proposals.
You mean for the people that submit? I've never had that happen where, where they, where we pay for anybody who submitted proposals.
I have, but I've worked on huge projects.
For me, we're saying we have 10 point something million dollars to build this, and this is provided by McKenzie. So, then we put out the RFQs, we get a better bid from somebody else who has a totally different view of this, and so this won't look like this, but we've already said yes with this idea in our mind, and then it ends up not being that.
That's a possibility, yes.
Okay.
That is a possibility.
And so, as far as McKenzie goes, I mean, you're dealing with 10 million bucks, that's a lot of money. And they're gonna, you're gonna have an idea, we're gonna, right, of who their past clients have been. Are we gonna contact those municipalities to say, how was your experience about, and how much percentage did they charge you? We are gonna do that.
Yeah. When we receive those RFQs, it'll ask for their past work, and certainly do our due diligence, do some...
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot, one or two points makes a lot of money.
We have basically background checks on their past projects.
10 million dollar project, which will likely be 10 plus.
Which is a change, you know, change orders.
Yeah.
The things that will come out of this document that are going to be used is essentially, it's not necessarily that layout, but these are the components that we want to have in the building, okay? So, you might get an architect that has a different layout than this, but the, but the purpose of this document was to create the components that we need based upon the assessment that they had, space needs assesses. And so, you notice that there's no architectural rendering, there's not a facade that you're looking at or anything like that. It's just showing this is a layout that will provide for those needs, and the architects will come in and they'll look at it and say, okay, we've gotta have all this kind of stuff, and then they'll give us a proposal based on that.
How many, do you anticipate, or do you anticipate a number of people responding to the RFQs? Companies or builders or architects or whatever it is that are gonna submit things. Do you anticipate more than one?
Yeah, well, sure.
I mean, it's 10 million dollars. I can do it, you know?
Right. That was one of the concerns, is that being a team of a project, and to get people to stay here that long, you know, a thousand people, thousands of people, it will be sourced. That's a concern.
That many, they can buy mom.
No. They have to have their own talent to stay here.
With that concern, you know, there's a hospital project that's gonna be going on too, so those...
How many people are you gonna spend in building?
And the people that fill these, that's what they...
They're gonna try to, I mean, they're gonna stick...
But they just, you know, like, our projects use so many full people, dump trucks.
It would be a debt plus a...
So, do we need to vote on that general manager right now? Um, well, let me ask you, do you want to make a decision on proceeding with that before we talk about financing, or do you want to wait to get the whole still?
What other, what other things have we done using this method, and what other things have we done using the design bill? Design bill?
Design bid bill?
Yeah.
The most recent one of this one would be your, the boring project that we're doing now. Most projects we've done has been the design bid bill.
So, we had some difficulties on that one.
We did.
And have we, do we have remedies in place now so we won't have the same difficulties against? If we had something like that on police station, that would be a disaster.
This process is, that we just used. That's what we have.
We did the boring first so we could find out what was wrong with the... We didn't...
We didn't change it.
So, if I hear you right, our first round of the boring was bid, design bid bill process, or credit ourselves by going construction.
And they, they gave us a price, plus their, you know, history and their approach. So, it worked well. So far, we're on the way to the bid.
Now, the next part for the rest of the spiel is on the financing of this project. Debbie's gonna carry most of the load on this discussion, but I'll go ahead and just introduce it. There's two methods of financing this, this type of debt. The first is through a general obligation bond, okay? General obligation bond is one that you are pledging faith, taxing, credit, obviously, for the payment of the debt, which basically says that if you are at a point where you're going to default on that debt, you will raise property taxes to pay for it. You do not have a choice on that. The benefit of doing that is that it gives you the best interest rate. It's a very, very safe bond for people to hold, the risk is very low, so you usually get the best interest rate that you can, because it's so secure. The process includes going for an election. An electorate has to approve that financing method. The, the risk that you have on it is that technically, what you are, what the electorate is voting on is the financing method, but inevitably, every project I've seen that has gone through a geo bond, they are voting on the project, okay? Do we want to build a police department? Not? Do we want to finance it with property taxes? I've never seen a city council survive when they had a no vote, and they found a way to go ahead and do it anyways, okay? So, the risk is, is that if your electorate says, no, we do not want to do this, then you should be prepared to walk away from the project, okay? Yes?
So, people that are watching and listening tonight, you haven't mentioned where the funding is actually coming.
Right. Right. And that's coming up next. So, the second, the second type of financing debt is through a revenue. In that case, what you're doing is you're pledging a revenue source other than property taxes, which you pay for the debt, okay? And so, if, for example, you were at a point where you were going to default on it, you do not have to raise the property taxes in order to do that.
You can, but you don't have to.
You also don't have to, go ahead, Debbie, did I get that wrong?
Did you say on the revenue bond you could raise taxes?
I understood you could.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry.
You can't raise property taxes, and that's one, as I see it, an advantage of the revenue bond is that it's guaranteed that you won't raise property taxes versus a promise.
Thank you. Now...
So, there's a possibility, even though it's remote, that the city would default, then don't you have to on the ballot put this could raise your taxes?
Yes.
On a general obligation?
On a general obligation.
Yes. On a general obligation bond, even if we promise not to raise taxes, if we're in a position where we can't pay, we're not moving forward to raise taxes. So, we can't guarantee 100%, maybe 99.9, but not that.
Now, the city is very fortunate, okay, in that we have a very large revenue source that somebody years down the road, actually, our residents were very wise when the transient room taxes built into our charter, asked how those funds would be spent. And a portion of the fund of those transient room tax are due to be spent on capital facilities. First was this building, okay? That's been completed, and the requirement now is that if you spend those funds, it has to be on other capital facilities to further the needs of the city. We are proposing that we use those transient room tax funds to pay for the debt, okay? We are not proposing that we raise property taxes to do this. So, therefore, as we as the staff have analyzed it, we don't see the need to have a general obligation bond. Now, a revenue bond, because it's not quite as secure, usually carries a higher interest rate. The last update that we have on what that difference is between a general obligation bond rate and a, a revenue bond rate, is about $85,000 over the life of the bond, for your life. So, you're talking about $2,700 a year, okay? And so, as we've looked at this, the recommendation that we're making is that we go with the revenue bond. There's a couple of other reasons why that's important. If you go with the general obligation bond, you want to hold it at the next election, which would be in May, you've got some really fast coming deadlines, okay? And, but you also have on that election, we understand, some other debts, some other bond issues that are gonna be coming, such as a fire coming. If you're also looking at that, Sano just recently went through a general obligation bond for a police department, and it was defeated, and so they walked away from that police department now. And so, the reasoning, the, the point for us and why we're recommending this, is that if we're not going to raise property taxes to pay for this, why should we make an issue? And then the second reasoning is the difference between the bonds, and our last check was low enough, but it's not a significant annual difference between, between the savings we would give by the, the general obligation. Maybe you want to add to that?
A further reason is that in our sewer system, I believe we will, we want to do the projects that we're going to need to do, we're going to have to, most likely have to ask for a go bond, and so how many times do you want to ask for permission to raise property taxes?
Question, comments that you have?
Just to Debbie, I'm not sure I even heard you. Oh, sorry. So, you, you said that, I think, is that some of the sewer projects that we have, is that what you said?
Yes.
That on the run above what are...
Unless you want to do really, really, really big rate increases in sewer, and even then, I'm not sure, you'd have to, far more than anyone would want to do, we're gonna get to a point, at some point, where we're gonna need to, to ask for a go bond to fund some of the sewer projects, yes.
So, what you're saying is that, are you talking about obligation time again?
Yes.
She's saying, no, it's general obligation.
Sorry. Okay. I'm, well, to be clear, there are people...
Try to keep telling us not to use...
We're not using it, but she is, oh, my.
Well, the sewer, I'm anticipating, yeah, I believe it will, we will need to raise property taxes at some point to fund some of the sewer needs.
Okay. Then my next question is, when do you think that'll happen, and what kind of money are you talking about? I don't know what projects they are, what...
We're still working on that. I, I don't really have a timeframe yet. It's, you know, we're in the relative near future. The next one. Actually, our, our huge that we're, we're trying back to purchase in the building that bought us some time.
Yeah, I thought it looked pretty stable now.
Well, for, for a while, for maybe four years, five years, you know, we'll have to see how it's...
Sorry, after that.
And after that, then you're looking for a dryer. And, but we have many other sewer projects.
Don't system development charges, can't we raise those to cover that or something? I can mix that up.
System development charges can only pay for, system improvement, system development charges can only pay for increased capacity. So, the thought is, if you've got a new person coming in, they increase the demand on your system, they have to pay for the, the cost of increasing the capacity of your system. So, you can't use it on replacing things or...
Wouldn't a dryer help you, help us do that?
You're more than likely on a dryer, could use a portion of it, because a portion of it is affected by capacity.
But you couldn't do a hundred percent.
But you couldn't do the whole thing.
We can't just keep going back to the trough every year.
Well, if we, if we fund this, call it trade replacement, with this sewer improvement, SDC improvement fees, it's pretty much gonna wipe out that fund, and it has, at least in the past, been occurring pretty slowly. So, it'll be some time before there's even some money in that fund again.
Does the revenue bond have, kind of prepayment appropriations, eliminating prepayment or if TRT tax?
No, we've prepaid, we've prepaid, we're revenue bonds.
So, again, would be... I think we have paid early, almost early.
Yeah. And a lot of it's the way that you structure the bond, and that, and those are decisions we can make, yeah.
Is there a requirement, so if we use all the TRT money, does it, does the source then go to the revenue bond? I mean, all of it? Is there, is there any TRT money that we can keep back for other capital facilities?
Yes, we would structure the link, you know, given a 30-year bond, even, even at 11 million, we would have, we would still have money even at the beginning, in the next two, three years, even in that timeframe, we would have extra additional TRT money. So, it's not gonna take all of the TRT.
Yes, I'm concerned about.
And then over time, as the TRT revenue grows, we'll have more and more.
The one thing I would suggest that you do on this is that, just because we're recommending the revenue bond over a general obligation bond, doesn't mean that citizen employees are not important. And so, one of the things that I would suggest is that as we are going forward and putting everything together within your individual awards, the staff goes with you and talks to you, and we let them know what's going on, so they understand exactly what's going to be built, how it affects them financially. I always think it's great to give resident input, so just because we're not asking for a general obligation bond, doesn't mean that we're not asking, so don't go top of the list, so, yes.
I think I've made this suggestion before, that I think it's maybe just to you though, but I think it would be important to do some kind of a mailer to everybody, because we can pull meetings, but as snow, that doesn't mean everybody will come. And I suggest it be pretty simple and straightforward, and I, for one, would rather do an obligation bond, but I could see that, you know, that might not get to what we want to do, so...
Yeah, we get some on that, we stay some.
Yeah, exactly. That's not the goal, so, you know, I can see that, but then, we need to do more, like the medium slide. need to do more, like the meetings, like a mailing, like perhaps opening up the police building, the parts that could be toured, to show people how badly the city needs the new building.
Chief, I've done some preliminary meetings with folks, and it's been positive, and it's going to be more positive, because I'm not going to raise property taxes, but it's been fairly positive. There's been good questions, there've been hard questions to ask, and those are always good questions, and I expect that we'll get more. But, like I said, even on a revenue bond, it's good for us to go out and talk to people and hear.
The communication that we do is not dependent on financing. We do the same communication on either.
So, Ron, what happens if we say, "Okay, I want to go four years down the road," and actually, part of July, where our backs are up against the wall at that moment, so we don't have enough money because we blew our revenue bond, we already used a police station. Now, we've got, we're having real problems with our water treatment, sewage, but we're up against the backs, we're taking it to a general obligation bond, they say, "No," I have a failing system with no way to finance it.
You could run into that.
But, on the other hand, these transient room taxes are constrained for city buildings, and so, it's limited to what else you could use these funds for.
Yes, I think the question you're asking, can you use these on the sewer?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, a general obligation bond, sure.
Yes, but not transient room taxes.
No, but not transient room taxes. I'm saying that if you went with a, use the transient room tax to finance your police station, right? So, that's a well you can dip into one time. I mean, there's going to be some leftover, but not enough to provide a sewer treatment needs. So, now you have to say, "Well, we're up against the wall, we've got four years, the dump's not taking our cake anymore, and we need to get this thing fixed." So, you can't go back for a revenue bond, because you've already used it on the police station.
The question that's being asked is, can you use the transient room tax funds to pay for the sewer projects?
I don't believe so.
Can you create a revenue bond that will, for sewer projects that would use the transient room tax money? Is that...
What I'm saying is, is that if you're out of financing options, if we don't have, if the voters say, "No," you can't have a general, they vote, "No," then you're done. On what? On the street? Okay, on the sewer. So, if the voters say, "No," we can't go back to the revenue bonds, because we're already using them on the police station, we can't use them. My question?
Even if you left the transient room taxes alone, and then you go do a sewer bond, and they say, "No," you still cannot use those transient room taxes for sewer.
Can I try?
You can't do a revenue bond on it.
Can I, can I try?
Yeah.
Maybe, because I'm hearing it differently, what you're saying. I almost hear it like, forget the revenue bond for a minute, and we have these two sewer projects that we have to do. They're both time-sensitive, they both have to be built, in the opinion of everybody, and so, if you, if we chose to go the obligation bond for the police station, and that works maybe, but then, you can't do the revenue bond for the wastewater treatment plant, so the only option we really have is the revenue bond to use that for the police station, and an obligation bond for the treatment plant.
Kinda, I'm just worried it's about running out of resources to borrow money.
Well, and if we pledge, you know, if we use a go-bond for the police building, we have the capacity to raise property taxes, that does impact our ability to do a general obligation bond for sewer.
So, what do we do then, if they say, "No," and we don't have any? Right now, we have ultimate means of financing. Is that right? We can either go with a revenue bond, or which is...
Only for the police.
Only for the police. Okay, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. So, we have a choice with the police department, we can go with a revenue bond or a general obligation bond, right? Problem with the general, God, is that if they say, "No," it's "No," we're done, right? You don't have that resource. So, say, we pick the revenue bond for the police station, okay? So, we use that. Now, we've used the revenue coming from the TRT taxes, that's been pledged, so that's off the table. The police station is now financed by the revenue bond, is paid for by the TRT money. Now, four years later, we've got to find out a way to finance the new sewage plant, or priors, or whatever they all were doing. So, the only option we have left at that time is a general obligation bond.
It's the only option.
It's the only option you have regardless.
Okay, so it's the only, the only, the only way we have is a general obligation bond, that's the only thing that's...
Besides raising.
Besides raising the taxes. So, you say, raising the rates, okay? So, you say, we go to the voters and say, "We want to have a general obligation bond." They say, "No," right? Paid for.
And we raise rates.
Then we just, that's what we're stuck with. And what impact would that have? How much would the rates have to go up? Because we're up against the wall according to Lila.
I can learn some estimates on how much we have to raise rates, do you?
I mean, what I'm trying to say is, what we decide now, might really come back and haunt us in the future.
Not necessarily, because only if you choose to do the GO.
Right, right. Only if you do the GO.
But I'm saying is, what we do now has an impact on what's going to happen four or five years from now. And if we're up against the wall, we're not going to have a lot of positioning options. I guess you're between a rock and a hard place.
But we can't use TRT for the wastewater.
But that's not the point. The point is, is that you're going to have, whatever we decide here will have impact four years down the road, as far as trying to tackle this next problem, because one of the options, unless we run a general obligation bond, we try to run another general obligation bond, I think they'll be all bonded out, you know?
There's a better, I think there's a better chance to get a general obligation bond for sewer, if we use a revenue bond for the police. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, except that realizing that if you, they may be sick of you, and just say, "No," and then, we have to do the water rates. And if we have to do that, how much will the water rates have? Because at one point in this council's history, my level, remember, we had a water rates issue.
But that'll be the decision that the voters have to make.
Was for removing sludge, because we didn't...
Right, we've got a whole council recall.
Right, and that's the decision that the voters have to make in a few years, whether they want rates raised or general.
I'd still want to head us that way with oblivious to what's going to happen four years, because what we decide now will have an impact four years from now.
But, if you go out and talk about the revenue bond to people and explain how the TRT will cover all the annual premiums, and the TRT tax usually goes up 3% to 5% a year, so that's a solid, that's going to get paid, we'll probably pay it off early, no problem. And in the same venue as we go out, why not explain to people, and as I think I understand, when you ask people to vote on something, it's not saying your property tax is going to go up, it's saying that we're putting it on this proposal to say that we'll back it up in case it doesn't get paid. And we have, I understand, we have a very good bond rating, the city has good credit rating. So, I think when we go out there, we should let people know that we're just saying to the bond people before we go to the bond consultant, and say, "Yes, we citizens are willing to raise our taxes." That will give us a better rate, because we're saying, "Okay, we're willing to do this." How many times have we really had to do that? Well, we did that to purchase this building, and we didn't raise taxes, we used TRT money, and we... That was TRT money, yeah.
It's about...
But it was a general obligation bond, but we paid for it with TRT. And we didn't have to raise property taxes. But people have to understand that we're just saying, "Yes, we're willing to do it, but we've never had to do it." So, don't we want to freak people out to think you're going to have to raise our taxes or rates to do this?
So, the question, right now, do you want a direction from us? We're hoping for some direction, yes. Okay, are we in a position to offer that tonight? I think it's, now, uncomfortable, basically, if we can afford it, because we keep talking about it, and at some point, we need to make a call. So, we're looking for a motion, motion to proceed forward, two things. One is a motion to proceed forward with a type of construction process, and the other is a motion to proceed forward with a type of financing. Okay, so the type of construction process, we decide, the general, construction manager? Construction manager. Okay, so we're looking for a motion for that.
I saw you move. Second?
Motion second for the discussion. You're not doing, you don't want to talk about it, do you?
I need to have a motion stated, because I can't hear what you're saying.
Motion is to proceed with the construction management form of construction. And this will be the first, this will be the first, from the beginning, construction manager project we are doing from the beginning. The boring is a takeover job, correct? So, it was started, finished with a construction manager. This will be the first project in Lincoln City that will be started, finished, in this form.
We're going to have to.
We need to do it together.
Who's second?
Michael. Okay.
Go along. Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Holmland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hasper?
Yes.
Wonke?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It would be to proceed with financing the police department, using either a general obligation bond or a... We need a motion, one of those. One of them, and if it fails, we'll do a sewer, is that it?
I move to proceed with construction of the police department building by means of a revenue bond.
Second, from right. Okay, motion second, you're in discussion. You're in the middle of a conference.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Holmland?
Yes.
Hinton?
I want Debbie, yes.
Hasper?
Yes.
Wonke?
Yes.
Moore?
Not yet.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the only other question I have for you this evening is, we have two other parts we were going to discuss tonight, margin secretly carried by San Francisco. It's almost nine o'clock, do you want to carry on those, or do you want to wait until our...
You look forward.
I think you're done.
Or two.
But just so people, I just want to make sure it's clear that you need to pay attention, we're not dismissing the importance of it. It's just, you've been here for, for hours, maybe ten years since seven, I'm asking. I just want to say, I agree, but I'd like to talk, so, say that out there.
I keep getting the home at ten o'clock, I'm city business, I'll be on the set.
Okay, so, everyone came with that? I'd like to thank Sheldon, so we're glad to give you a name, or we've already got the next meeting, December six. Not because I'm bored? Bored. Only, thank you, thank you, yes. If the final action that we need is that we're looking for a motion to proceed, go bring it back to a change order, and then we do, we need a budget amendment for this.
We don't, we don't need a resolution to do a budget transfer, because in the SDC improvement fund, the fund balance basically is budgeted as a capital. But we would like, I think, clarification, just a discussion that we're moving it from capital contingency to capital construction, but it does not require a resolution, because it's in the same legal category.
I have a question. We're doing one boring right now, and we're talking about two other boring, one at the wastewater at Forty-Eighth Street, and then one at 101, running concurrently with what's going on right now, just so I'm clear. We're going to bore next to where we're boring, right? Well, yes, but also on the one that's, on the one that's up at Forty-Eighth, that includes also the line installation.
Yes, that's, that boring, if you get a line, the valving will come secondary.
Is that, okay, wait a minute, we got to come back. So, we're talking about two boring, the other line...
We're talking about boring a line at Skunk Ridge Bridge.
Going right next to what's going on right now. Guys, I just need to remind everyone, and two people are talking, it doesn't pick up, so turn around. Okay, Lila, let's make sure I'm understanding this. What we are asking them to do is to construct this line.
Correct.
Which includes boring there. So, it's not just digging, it's not just putting a pipe under the river, it's constructing the line from there to there, which includes that boring, am I right?
Right, the whole thing is a boring, so it'll go from that point to the plant, so the entire project is a boring project.
Wow, I mean, that's so cool. Well, that brings up my question is, how do we do this legally without, how do we just say, "Here's a new project"?
We have, because we went through that design.
This, that's done at the same time?
No, we went through that process to get the contract.
I understand that, but I still understand, I'm going to say, "Yeah, here's a new project, since you're ready, I'm going to do it."
Well, because we went through that selection process.
I understand, we selected them, but we got... Richard, do you see any issues with this?
Actually, we got one.
I'm not at all comfortable with the proposal to just add it on, because we have limitations on amendments to our existing contracts, such as the port and the go. So, I understand what you want to do is to do, select the same contractor to do another boring project, but I don't know that this fits within the amendment limitations that we enacted last year. I know we tried to clarify exactly how much an amendment to an existing contract would be as opposed to a new contract. Let's just hang on to this one, and we will bring it back to one of your council meetings. And then, when you're out, we'll have to step in.
We might. And the other one, at the bridge?
Same thing.
We'll do the same thing back.
Anyone else? I'm stomach's a bit easier, I'm going to drop.
The voters' memory is effective, and if I can get with you, then get with you.